All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Carrie, can you confirm we are in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Thank you, and if you would please take a roll call.
Commissioner Zer.
Here.
Commissioner Bika.
Here.
Commissioner Flemis.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Nordine.
Here.
At this time, those who are willing and able, please rise and join the panel.
My pledge is to the plague of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted. We have one item tonight on our agenda, that is a referendum work session. At this time, I'm going to turn the whole thing over to Abby and mainly to the members of Budget Development Committee. I know you've been working on this for a while, so whoever would like to take away rubber at a work session, we generally use more informal, so if you have something to say, feel free to try to drop in and talk. If it gets too chaotic, we can go back to being recognized. We'll try to do it like we do with our work sessions.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Nordine. So as you said, tonight is a board referendum work session, and so our agenda for tonight, while I could get used to this, is we're going to review the referendum calendar first that the board had adopted, then we're going to go through some survey feedback. As many of you know, we had some listening sessions in March, and then we had a call track survey that we sent out to our communities. We've got that feedback to share with you tonight. We want to talk a little bit about facilities and where we're at with facilities, and then have some time for discussion about the next steps for the referendum. So the first thing on our agenda was to talk about the timeline as far as the referendum. And so you can see here that I've crossed out some of the things on our calendar. That's because we're done with them, and so we didn't need to review them. The things in yellow tonight, we wanted to give a brief update, and so one of the things that we'll ask tonight at the end is confirmation from the board to proceed with referendum in November 2022. A quick update on the vendor, the contracted vendor survey completed and results presented to the board, that will help inform the decision of what should be included in the referendum. We do have our contracted vendor picked out. We are working through the contract details now, but we will anticipate that Budget Development will start working on developing the questions in the next week. And then again, we should be on target to get those surveys completed and then be able to report back to the board in early May for that.
Abby, before you go on, I just want to point out that because of the way that our agenda is structured, with this being a board development and work session, I don't know that we can do any formal vote, because we did not announce that we would formally be voting. I think we can talk about intention, but if the administration needs a formal vote to proceed, we would have to put it on a future meeting, maybe at consent after tonight, but I don't think it's probably appropriate for us to make any formal votes tonight in the work session.
Right. I'm sorry, I maybe misled you on that. We weren't expecting.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, just based on the...
Sure.
Thanks, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Then really kind of highlighted, you know, we're in April of 2022, gather feedback to establish internal unity about our needs and priorities, and then identifying the areas that need additional emphasis or additional information, and we'll have an opportunity to get some feedback from you as board members about what else do you need, and we'll have that throughout our conversation tonight. The items kind of in this bluish color are what we're going to be talking about tonight, really discussing the feedback from the community listening sessions, continue the board discussion on our referendum needs, operational specifically, may need a couple of board work sessions on what facilities should be or could be included in the referendum. Obviously, we have some more information for you tonight. And then really reviewing that information that was gathered from the listening sessions, the call track survey, and then as we move forward with our vendor survey, are there things that we want to prioritize and what we think our community would support in the referendum? So those are some of the goals that we have from our work session tonight, but we do have some information we want to present to you before we get to that point. So with that, Mike, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thanks much, Abby. Good evening, everybody. Just to preface, we had initial feedback that's included in Board docs from the virtual hour-long sessions with approximately 50 members of the public on March 9th and March 16th, and some of you had participated and helped facilitate those. We actually also had our family advisory council do this as part of our early March meeting on March 8th. That gave Abby and me a little bit of time to adjust a little bit for that first night on the 9th. This was a PowerPoint presentation, and it was followed by approximately 40 minutes in depth on the questions that you will see very soon. The main electronic survey that we'll start on this slide was data collected from Wednesday, March 23rd, for a full week until March 30th. The board received the raw data and all comments, and Abby and I had gone through that Thursday afternoon. We had taken themes from the data, arranged it for the first three questions, but in numbers of the responses to the specific themes. First off, and I'll go through these fairly quickly, we had 11 responses. We actually had 11 students complete the survey. The next slide, you'll be able to see the breakdown. Well, most people did not attend the virtual learning session, but for those who did, we asked them to fill out the survey. We did have 108 community members fill in the responses. And if you could advance the next slide. For our staff, we announced this again on March 23rd, and yet even beforehand in some staff discussion is that it was going to be out there. We wanted to share that in early March with all members of the public, and if people wanted to take part in those, they could. 119 had responded. Moving on, the parent family survey, that's what we expected. We would expect to see more families take an interest in it and give us their feedback. 274 responses to the areas and the questions that we had posed. So the five survey questions, you know, assist whether it's the audience here in person with us this evening or via WebEx. In our opinion, or in your opinion, what items should the referendum address? If you were to prioritize one of three areas the referendum should focus upon, what would they include? Third, what challenges do you perceive that might prevent our district from having a successful referendum? What are the strengths of the district that could be addressed by a referendum, and what area or areas could the district improve upon that could be addressed? So we'll go through numbers one through five. The next, that slide, when people then went into it, in your opinion, what items should a referendum address? They were buildings and facilities first, class size, pay compensation, and mental health services going down, going down the line. We're going to break these down a little bit more. Again, thanks to Abby Johnson and Rosa Pomplin as well for going through these, a lot of high litter work and underlining, but with their help, there was additional theme data that we wanted to break down for you. For buildings and facilities, there were just general, 76 general comments mentioned, and then as follows, there were specific responses to South, North, Roosevelt, Memorial, Athletic Facilities, Meadow View, and Putnam Heights. And then for the class size, overall, 25 people responded, just in a general format, four were more specific to elementary. For pay, there are 25 responses that were general, 14 specific to teacher, two to hourly, and finally, for mental health, overall, 11. For the next slide, for feedback themes, to prioritize one to three areas that the referendum should focus upon, what would they include? Again, these were not just in the survey, but in the discussions we had with family advisory council, as well as our virtual sessions on the 9th and 16th. And again, I do have something scheduled with, you know, as we go further in this process to get more information, for example, from MUP TA. But anyway, they were, you know, the priorities were very similar, building the facilities first, the class size, the pay compensation, and then the mental health. If we go to the next slide, the breakdown's similar. I won't review all the numbers again, because they are so similar. But there were a couple that were added in specific for buildings or facilities. There was one, South Side Schools in general, and then there were South Side Elementarys, just one, and then one overall with all elementaries. Moving to the next slide, feedback themes, what are the challenges you perceive that might prevent us from having a successful referendum? In looking at the responses, as well as listening to folks on the 19th and 16th, you know, we asked for those challenges. The first with previous referendum would be not understanding the purpose or how long the referendum would extend. Secondly, for present and past issues of the district, included administrative concerns, COVID protocols, present political climate transparency, and general issues with pandemic. Thirdly, the present economic situation, we found really two ideas there. The present economic situation was mentioned with not just funding at the state level and how it impacts Oakley Area School District, but also just inflation nationwide. And to help you, we wanted to add this in to help with the transparency, to address a couple of these, you know, to illustrate that previous referendum, we wanted to include the slide. We've been sharing this slide for use of the funding on the 2016 referendum. It's actually required, and I know through 2017 on, as part of the regular budget development process or the budget process and approval. You know, that has, that's been shown every year during budget adoption, with the comments about, you know, class size at times mentioned or questions about the referendum, this is why we're sharing it, because there's flexibility in that class size question. I know that Abby has stated that, for example, because of the hybrid model, class sizes were already 12 to 14, let's just say, on the average. Well, didn't need to put monies or put funding toward that, didn't need to reduce. So it's just an example of, you know, sharing that from something we had heard or things we had heard and noticed in the, in the survey. The next slide, we get to question four, what are the strengths of the district that could be addressed by a referendum? And, you know, staff, and we talked about efficiencies and fiscal responsibility, and they were really hard to pinpoint, because you had people that would talk about individual staff members, whether it be hourly staff, or teachers in general, or hourly in general, or principals in general, as a couple of your non-heads, you'd seen that. So, you know, like I said, it was, it was a little more difficult, it was a wider range, but, you know, as a superintendent, I was really proud of that, with our staff being recognized like that, especially during the pandemic. It's been extremely difficult work the last couple of years. With fiscal responsibility, people had illustrated, while people still need to understand the funding formula and the revenue caps from 1993, there were many respondents that were aware of that. They've heard that before. They've heard that in the 2016 referendum. They remember those types of things, and where Oakley was penalized for being efficient, yet we still need to continue to explain our story consistently. The next slide, you know, for the feedback, what would be some areas we could improve upon that would be addressed by a referendum? Again, building and facilities, you had seen that in the raw data, you had, I had spoken about it a little bit beforehand, yet with pay and compensation, to illustrate, as we go further in this process, again, you know, we need to explain more of our relationship regionally, with pay compensation for hourly and certified staff, for the Big Rivers Conference, for the size of, the size of our enrollment, and for UW system pay structures, that we had discussed in closed session, that we presented that data to you, like the board had received. But as we continue this work, there's going to be more data to share. While we knew the 2021, because we could go to other districts, you know, HR departments or their administrative departments or finance departments, it's difficult to predict for 22, 23, because districts are in the process of, okay, do you go to the full CPI, 4.7? That's still being determined across the state. And compensation scales, well, they may say 4.7, but they don't have a scale necessarily. Another final item was class size. You know, we'll find out the outcomes this year, as we kept the same parameters, obviously with a few exceptions at the elementary level, and elementary, as you had seen before, we had articulated that there were some specifics to elementary. What was nice to note in one or two of them, they acknowledged that, and this is something we are proud of, is with our regular operations budget to provide for 13 interventions across, intervention across the entire, all 13 elementary schools, and that's something that hasn't happened before. We're proud to do that, and it's never occurred, but it's something we're continuing this year during our staffing process, the hires that we had over the semester break, and we've been very clear about that, with 40 to 50 staff being hired at the semester break, but also with SRR3 funding that we have now, as well as the constant communication and meetings on staffing with HR, finance, and principals during our staffing process at this time. Finally, with referendum type, you know, just to, just to summarize, for the operations to review, it's, you know, class size, with class size and compensation, mental health services come up, that is operational, and finally, with capital, we're dealing with the facility needs of our, of our schools and our district. At this point, before we move on to the next slide, we'd really like to get feedback from you. Abby, I talked about this before, with your review of the data, your feedback, your insights, many of you were part of the facilitation on the 9th and the 16th. You're very connected in the community, people share things with you, your experience with those virtual presentations, but just general discussions after you've received that data. So we'd like to open this up for some time, for you to be able to share, you know, what your interpretations were, what you had seen, what you have experienced, and what you've,
Dr. Johnson?
Thank you. So I guess for me, it was, it was, it was nice to see, I think, the overarching theme of the realization of the capital improvements, you know, I, you know, it's, it's going to come down to, what was interesting in the session that I had an opportunity to tell when I, when I saw feedback, it was only, it was not only just buildings, but the idea of addressing extracurricular options, and not only as it relates to athletics, but, you know, improving the acoustics for, for music and for choir, you know, and to be a little bit more appealing. So I, you know, coming into this, I, I, that was not on my particular radar, the adding to and or considering the extracurricular pieces, but I thought that was really interesting, that that's also a theme that came out. And, you know, I guess for me, and it's, you know, it's something that, you know, I would, I would hope that the school board continues to press upon, there is a huge concern, not only from the two, the two parents and the two educators that I had on, and then the random community member. We have to figure out a way to address class size, teacher-student ratios, and it really, that concern, you know, from K through eight is really where it's been expressed, and if we can't do it via the hiring of grade-level teachers to reduce that teacher-student ratio, you know, I think, Mike, I briefly mentioned to you, is that we potentially have to reconsider or reimagine that role of that interventionist or that coach, where they potentially lead breakout sessions, where they take a couple of students to provide some additional work and/or we allow for some potentially co-teaching models as well to address, to address that piece. And so, you know, I, I think I really like the operational piece. You look around, you look around the states that are actually moving towards a referendum, you know, I think some have strategically decided to address one, then the other, then do both, but it appears, just from the feedback, feedback here, that at least one of those operational pieces, and if we could construct a table similar to the one from the last referendum, of really looking, what would it mean to provide educator support in reduction of, of class size, teacher-student ratio? And so, don't hold those mind on this. Thank you.
I can piggyback off, because it actually, I think, yeah. So the thing that I, I've been thinking a lot about, again, also on my, when I was in my breakout rooms for listening sessions and hearing about facility needs, and I think, and just knowing, you know, just knowing what's happening, you know, across our CISO with referendum and sort of what, how those narratives are going in other districts, I think the thing that Dr. Johnson mentioned about extracurriculars, but sort of what, I don't want us to just, so this is, I don't want us to just add on to a building to add space for bodies. It doesn't, it's not, that, that's not a big enough vision to go out to our community with, is what, what we need to do when we invest in our facilities is actually invest in opportunities and outcomes for our kids. So I want to hear this, I want us, when we go to invest in our facilities, I want us to, to be doing that with, with not just the intention of creating more space, but intention of creating more opportunity. So whether it's extracurriculars or it's, you know, I have a soft spot for recruiting technical education, but whatever it might actually be that's happening inside those buildings that's just increasing opportunities for kids, that is how we go out to our community and say, I mean, yes, we need space, right? We, our kids do need space. Some of our buildings are in dire need, and I think that having, I, I think that I would agree with the community about South and North, and those about being high on that list, but the, what I want to see in facility, when we go out and tell a story about them, is what are we, what, what opportunity are we creating within those walls for our kids by, by that, through that investment? As far as class size goes, that's something, I feel like that operational component, I want to have more discussion on, because I understand that the EMLSS system, the model that we're in right now, perhaps that has, that those coaches are being used, those interventionists are being used in a, in a capacity to, and I don't necessarily, I want to hear more about the intention of the slightly increased class sizes for the sake of interventionists, and is that something that we're, is that something that we just did out staffing, or is that something that we're, we're committed to, or is that something that we actually want to address through the referendum?
Well, I think, sorry to interject, because we have more board members, but to somewhat piggyback on what you both brought up with, and Abby could, could assess, in looking at class size, with those variables, and you talked about with possibly two stages to address one before the other, what we have now, you know, like to be able to examine the data, have we heard plenty from, from our staff members, especially our staff members, but also principals, where you've also got, as a result of the pandemic, we've got more behavioral concerns. And when you have 25 in a class at the elementary level, let's say, there's a big difference between 25 and 22, or 25 and 21, all it takes is one or two students, but noticing those behaviors is key. The part at that level, but actually with all levels, is the SRR3 funding. The SRR3 funding, and we've shared that in our, in our communication, SRR3 funding is not, you're not able to use it solely for class size. We've checked that out with DPI. There are certain, there are specific items where it's K2 or K1 with certain early learning, and we had to do that, and Abby is nodding her head, we had to share and ask questions of DPI, because we had staff ask that, we had administrators ask that about SRR3, hey, can we just reduce class size? Not alone, and there were specific, there were two instances where you're able to do that. However, with SRR3 funding, we can utilize those funds toward coaching, all those interventionists, when we were taking them out of the general fund anyway, that operations, and we've got that for two and a half years, as we've shared quite often in the SRR3. That's why, you know, if you were to look at the high school level, you, you lower class size by one, one student per staff member at the, at the high school level for both of our, you know, we've done the calculations with our, with our formula for staffing, that's, you know, $400,000 per student, if we go down from 28 to 27 to 26. At the high school level, it's 400,000. So we've got that idea, but solely for class size, we can't use SRR3 funds. It has to be real specific. So that's one thing to, you know, we really do, we really need to look at that data, our STAR data, we've got forward exams coming right now, too, and especially at that elementary level with, you know, 13, 13 schools now having interventionists, how much do we move the needle with these kids that really need a lot of assistance? So I just wanted to add that.
On the class size, and there, there hasn't been a time, you know, that I've been on the board or anybody else who hasn't been talking about class size, but a really critical piece of that discussion any time is the research on class size. So you, you know, there's probably not a parent out there, you know, who wouldn't want a smaller class, but when you, the, the research is quite clear about, you might have fewer kids in a class, but it has no effect on learning outcomes. The learning is the same, whether you have this many children or that many children. And it depends, you know, there are factors, age, is it a more, you need a lot more individual attention, you know, do you have some behavioral challenge, you know? So it's not one size fits all, but that has always been important, you know? It really doesn't matter, actually, if there are 34 children in the classroom, you know, don't, you know, obviously, that's not a good thing, but that, you can never educate enough on the research.
And that's why the DPI hadn't stated it, with our plans, we cannot use those funds toward...
But I, but I also think the research proportionality matters, and, and I, and I would argue in the, in the research, especially when you look at for students with specific types of disabilities, and that behavioral piece, so, and I, and I, and I think what, what is known is actually that as a result of hybrid and virtual learning, as, as students have returned, and maybe, it may be age-based, but the behavioral problems, our behavioral concerns have heightened. And so for me, it's that proportionality piece, until we, we get back to a, I guess, a typical racial behavioral issues that we expect and don't expect, it is, you know, it is those everyday experiences, you know, that I, you know, that I have received emails from and taught to teachers where, you know, you know, this interventionist, and it, you know, it may be, it may be a rethinking of the EMLS system, though, in terms of, do we provide a little bit more, I guess, I think, just reimagining that model, but yeah, you're, you're right, do, do numbers matter? I think, you know, some, some teachers in, in LA and New York City would argue, actually, numbers do matter, once you get past like 65 and 70 in a class, but yeah, but I think the, the, I think that behavioral piece is the, the unknown and uncertainty that's been impacting, like the desire for teachers now to really kind of address that class.
It's work session. You just got to jump in. If you don't, I got mine.
I have so many thoughts going around in my head. In my session, there was a, a big takeaway for me, because the folks that, that were commenting on the referendum, it was about the last referendum, and what was that, and what was it for, and tell us what you spent it on, and wasn't that supposed to be for 15 years, and why are you coming back to us again? Which, for me, was, was something of, of new information, because there's, there's reoccurring referendum and there's non-reoccurring referendum, and that wasn't a reoccurring referendum, but I think that people have, 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 are viewing it that way. So that's a story that I think we're going to need to spend some time on. In my role with budget development, I have been talking to folks about the referendum for some time, and I was, you know, talking to folks about getting that grassroots group together that would kind of be the spokesperson of the community.
together that would um kind of be the the spokesperson of the community. And one of the folks that I um I I approached was Lucinda Kennett, who has connected with the board on a couple of different occasions. Because in 2016, she led the effort and she was, you know, open and willing to being a a participant and I asked a number of folks since since then, which was several months ago and now, um my my optimism on on where we're at has kind of slowly, you know, just dissipated a little by little. And I I'll tell you why. It's just it's been a lot of obstacles that have all kind of, you know, just started to pile upon themselves. It's the inflation. It's the recent increase in property taxes. It's, you know, the the emotions around um COVID and everything, they they're running very high. I don't think that we've done what we need to do to tell the stories of the compelling need and there is compelling need. And it really kind of emanates out of that facility study, which which we've seen, but other folks haven't seen it. So one of the things that I was you you don't have a plan, the board doesn't have a plan. You don't, you're asking for a referendum, but you 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 have no, we do. And that that facility plan gave us a roadmap of what really needs to be done, but what is only in there is what we need to fix. What we could envision outside of things and facilities hasn't hasn't really been been considered. And so um, you know, it's my first time to run through this referendum and had I gone back three, four months ago, I I I think we would have been working on that story back then, but here we are in April and we need to have the question in August. And I'm a little concerned about the the November election in general because it may not be the best timing in the world. I don't even I don't know. But I'm concerned about our time and our ability to really put a compelling argument forward. And and I don't want to be the person that's that stands in front of progress, but it just seems like there's a lot of of hurdles that have been um put in front of us. And and the last one, and one of the things that I was really excited about was this survey. Because I wanted to know generally how the community felt about this referendum and we're doing it with the city. And and I I felt like that was, you know, a a good option until the last couple of weeks. And the city now is really getting some pushback on on the transit. And there's really questions now that are that are being generated on whether or not the city, because that's really been overspending, um needs their operational referendum, too. So we've packaged this together and and I, you know, this is there was an editorial in the paper about it, so I don't think I'm I I I'm editorializing. But that transit's a couple million dollars over budget and they're also asking for an operational referendum. And I think that there's going to be questions of what, well, you overspent here is the referendum, you know, to cover the operational expenses that are over here. And we're going into this request together, at least on this survey, which to me, I wonder if we get clean data to be able to make the decisions to then understand whether or not the community really supports this or not. And I go back to those that storytelling and not only the the dissemination of how badly our facilities need some renovation and some dollars put into it for maintenance, but also the brand new cooking lab that could be created or the the, you know, you named the educational lab opportunity that that um could be even be partnered with folks in the Chamber of Commerce or the Restaurant Association or any of these other places. And I just don't know between now and November whether or not we've got the ability to put that all together. And I think if we take some time and look at maybe uh so I'm advocating that we maybe delay and I I know throwing this out, it's the first time I've said it. I want it to pass and I don't want to run a referendum out, have it fail and then come back because I've heard people, I I don't think that will fly. So that's mine. My dive.
I hear you on the storytelling, Phil. I think it's really important and I think that we have not done the visionary work that we've we've looked at what our schools need. And I think that kudos to us, you know what I mean, for for like, here's what they need. We've done that work. But what what do they need to to survive and what do they need to thrive? Might be two different things. Or they might be, you know, one and some extra. The question I would have is do we do we know those things, Mike? Like, do we do we know the the extras, the the parts?
One thing that might help is maybe to talk a little bit about how we've been discussing it within budget development because the this is not a one and done, you know? It's like, there's no one that's gonna need all the things. And so to think, I think we we have done the homework. We have been telling the stories for years. Do we need to amplify? Absolutely. Can we do that between now and November? Yes. It's not gonna, you know, I know, survive and thrive, you know, survive and flourish. Totally get it. That's multiple referendum. So I I don't know. I mean, we've been talking a lot of philosophy kind of in that direction within budget development. I don't know if you want, I don't know if that would help to just kind of speak out with the group.
Yes, you know, I I I think that the idea when you look at other other school districts across across Wisconsin, one of the one of the ways that uh that they've been able to survive and thrive is the the recurrence of refer referendums that strategically address various components and sell and sell the community at on this investment. And this is what it will look like if we if we invest in 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 these particular things. But we have to invest in them over time. And so it, you know, it it's really one of those pieces where, you know, what does what does uh our surviving and thriving facility look for uh look like for for seventh graders? And then what does it look like if we reinvest for the second and third graders now? And then what can we do immediately? Because, you know, the 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 reality of it is, I, you know, I I I hear feel sentiments, but uh, yeah, you know, some some of this stuff, it has to happen, you know? And in in I just, I, yeah, it 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 has to happen, you know, and you know, in the the slide and the presentation, once we get to them about, you know, kind of like the cost of, you know, the these things happen, these things have to happen. And and in our our community, I would hope that the 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 learning experience itself is 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 not only impacted by the physical environment, but it's actually the the makeup of actually the individuals within that environment. But the research is actually clear. When you're in uh it 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 it's not a good look to actually be educated and dilapidated type of type of facilities. And some of us, those of us who have been been out and about in our facilities, I I I give the uh the educators and the facility people all the credit in the world trying to spruce up something with paint and all other uh D I Y approaches that 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 we take. But the reality from from an outside observer, you go into some of these buildings, it's like, wow, Claire's really not uh not doing well. You know, and some of our community members feel the same exact way, not only about buildings, but they they feel the same exact way about uh athletic fields. You see the same exact way when you come to show choir at Memorial versus after you go onto like the forest. You know, I I I just came back from Chicago and every time I I pass by the forest, outdoor athletic complex off of 94, I'm like, my goodness, this is actually pretty pretty impressive. But to so some of this stuff has to happen. And, you know, I I I think the the discussion and the debate, I, you know, it'd be interesting to hear the rest of it. But, you know, I I I I understand the delay and it may it it may be right with messaging, but I would also argue, though, the sentiments in our particular community, I'm not sure when is ever a good time to ask for money. I tell my kids all the time, it's not a good time to ask for money because your parents have that money. However, I know you're gonna ask and you know what? Sometimes I'm actually gonna say, yeah, that additional money to actually go to the movies with your friends, we can do it. Other times, you can't. And I'm I'm not sure when's a a good movie night, a good movie weekend to go out with your friends and what's not. If you believe that the messaging will 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 aid in that saying our community, but I I I think overall, we have to end that messaging. It cannot be, and I think the the thing that happens with referenda is that people think that one referend solves everything and it does not. It does not. And because and if we're not going to do multiple referendas, the other, I think it'll be a conflict of interest. And I know, uh, I I I think school athletic programs have gone to this model, not necessarily school discipline, but we really have to consider, think about uh public product partnerships, sponsoring classrooms, sponsoring buildings, if we're unwilling to this reoccurring and revisit reinvesting referendum. I had my apologies, I think I've taken a lot of people's time. I've got an actual bill that goes along with.
I would and we know we've talked about that. And there are those examples, for me, it's Verona, you know, or but, you know, everybody, every child should have what Verona has, I mean, every child. And so you can go to communities where, you know, if you if you go to lacrosse, you know, you could say, you know what? Come here, you're guaranteed, we have a s- a long-term strategic plan for multiple referenda. You've got that guaranteed and that's what we've been talking about creating here, a long-term, you know, multiple, like when what's the next one, right? So we have a long-term strategic plan for referenda because I will say that Eau Claire School Board, I mean, it is the grassroots group, I mean, that's so important, but ultimately it's our responsibility and we have not been aggressive enough. We, I don't mean, it's not the current, you know, not the current group we're doing at all here, but, you know, just in general, the board, we haven't been aggressive enough and want that guaranteed, you know, locked in for this community for years to come.
Just don't see how to say. Go ahead. One thing I'd like to add is, two years ago, I wasn't here yet, but three of you, I think, were not here when I was interviewing. It was right in the middle between the first and the second interview. And in asking questions, I know, I I can remember the pride that you shared when I asked the question about, please tell me about your fund balance. And you were so proud to just get to 20%. Well, as we know, what happens to bond ratings when you're between the 25 and 33? Okay, now that's where we are. And so then you can get more aggressive on the buildings. So that was one thing that, you know, yeah, I'm getting older, but I remember that this point in this day back in March, two years ago. So that helps set the stage, not just to survive, but then to be able to talk about thriving. One thing that I've heard, too, from and Phil had alluded to it in those, two of the four that I had on the ninth and the 16th, but I've also heard it from a variety of folks in the community over the past two years, is they're very mobile, you know, for athletics activities. They'll go to other conference schools, they'll go to regional, they'll go to Madison area, Appleton area, um Twin Cities area. And it's the wow factor, not just the basics. And you alluded to it before, what you'll find out from Abby a little bit more with the, you know, low, medium and high priority and Abby could probably talk about some specifics. But what the what the people and I really appreciated this in in good detail was, we understand, you know, you need some class size because of enrollment, you need some classrooms at Putnam, you need some at North, you need certain things at South just to be able to catch up to DeLonge from 10 years ago. But where's the wow fact? Where's the if? When you go to Hudson and you see the high school, wow. Even Menominee more recently with their fieldhouse and how that's and those of us who have been in this area for quite some time know what it used to be like at those places. And not just at the high school level, you know, your flagship institutions, it's the middles, it's the elementaries and what types of spaces. So not just the basics, but also something that we can get, we, and I mean as the community members, can get excited about. Not just those basics that every child deserves, not, you know, not the paint, but what can we really get behind and be excited about for the district and its kids and its families? So I I hope that, because I heard that loudly and clearly on the ninth and the 16th from two people, two of the groups I was with.
I love that idea of a multi-year plan. Like, I I I just love that idea of like, what where where are we aiming for? And you're, are you gonna say something negative about it?
Nope.
I thought you were gonna admit, I thought maybe you were.
Nope. I was going to speak positively about it.
Well, I I thought you said, I just don't know, is what I heard you say earlier. I'm like, oh, no.
I only got half of my, like, the first clause of my sentence. You've heard me talk, you know, there's always four or five clauses. You see me, right? You know it's longer than that. So you just gotta, this is.
Hang in there. Okay. Well, yeah, no, I love that. I love that. And I love that um that the community could see where we are headed and that we're not just going to facility, you know, to like, you know, facility referendum to just like, you know, deal with some leaky roof or crazy crisis that, you know, too many kids, leaky, leaky kids, just like kids falling into the ceiling. But like, you know, how like, how do we actually like get to that place again where like, hey, we're gonna go to Eau Claire for this event or we're gonna do this thing at Eau Claire and they've got that really cool facility? Like, that that's dreamy. I love that idea.
You all, I mean, you all probably knows, too, but I mean, the population of Eau Claire is growing when many other cities is has plateaued or is shrinking.
Largest largest population increase this past year.
So we're talking about, we want people to move here, you know? We want Eau Claire to continue to grow. And you come to Eau Claire, here's what you can count on, you know? You got it.
Can I just add one thing as you're talking about, Lori, you were sharing about the, you know, having a plan and regularly going to referendum, that's specifically for operations and really being focused on operations. So a lot of the discussion's been around facility and so, you know, you have to think about, are we talking two different types of referendums or are we gonna kind of bundle it into one? But I want to make sure that we're all on the same page that, you know, that recur, it can be both. But I know the strategy that we were looking at was specifically for operation and just the community knows every four years they're gonna come back and you can kind of see historically how it's done and the dollar amounts and what the words have been. And so that's what we really liked, that strategy was because it was just a known factor of every four years, you can expect us as a school district to come back to our community and ask for support for operations.
So I wasn't able to attend one of the sessions, so I can't speak to what I heard there, but building off of the conversation we've had thus far. And specifically, one of the things that you mentioned, Lori, about what do people see when they're when they're traveling, often for athletics or other programs, that really impacts people who are mobile and can choose, not not just choosing Eau Claire over the Twin Cities or some other uh outside of the immediate region competitor, but why would they choose Eau Claire over Eltina or Elk Mountain or? And and I'm not talking about vanity projects because there certainly are those out there, but I'm talking about when you go to a school, you're considering moving here, you have a job offer or make or whatever, and what are what are the few things that make your decision? It's go to look at the schools, you know, you're look for people most of their life cycle, the the quality of the schools, um both the culture, but that's really difficult to assess if you're not in the in the schools, but if you're driving around or you're hunting around, you're like, if you see schools that are like, oh, man, I this neighborhood is out because this building is not a place where it appears that I want my kid spending most of their waking hours, right? So that that that's huge, but it's not just an a kind of talent attraction thing, it's also it benefits people who are here now. Like, it's it's a virtuous investment. There there are few investments, if any, that are more important are from an ROI, human capital ROI perspective than schools. And I haven't been in all the buildings, but to Mark Quell's point, there are several that I've been in where you're like, I don't know if this building's changed since 1907 besides paint. And that, you know, and again, God bless our our. And that, you know, and again, God bless our, our facility staff, but some of our facilities are, were, were probably not top of the line when they were built 50 years ago. And, um, perhaps haven't kept up with what current best practices are. And, um, you know, I think, you know, I'm looking at the slide where it shows just the needs to upkeep current facilities is almost a hundred and thirty million dollars. And that's just to operate our existing facilities. It's not adding new capacity, that's not new cooking lab, that's not new athletic facilities. That's just like maintaining existing building. And so, you know, we have a lot of work to do to, to say, you know, these are all needs. Um, much less, gee, it'd be really great to have an athletic facility that was, was more than just kind of an afterthought. And, uh, I, yeah, I'm not a communications expert, I don't know quite how we get there, but I think there's a lot of constituencies in our community who want to express how they feel the community's self-image is. And if they want, if we want to express a community that feels like it's thriving, it's more than just lights on a bridge. Right? Um, it's what, it's what do our schools look like and how do they function for, for the staff and the students who go there? I mean, goodness, we're the second largest employer in the, in the region. You know, a huge number of people are directly connected to the, to the building, to our buildings where they spend their time, not even, not even including the students. So, um, I think we have to, we have to be able to express that this is, this is what we envision ourselves to be in the future. And we can point to other examples around the state where communities have made those investments and it causes people to say, wow, that, that place really cares about its people. Um, and it's for a large part, not because they're wealthier communities, although there are some of that, but it's because they've made a choice to do that. Um, and it does, I think, bear to where people who are mobile choose to be. And there's a lot of choices in our region of where people could choose to be. There's a heck of a lot of commuting that happens all over the place. Because people say, well, I wanna live in X because I want my kids to go to school here and all, my, yeah, my job's over there. So 15 or 20 minutes, I'm in two or three school districts over. Um, so how do we make sure that, that we're providing facilities that are, are places that, that draw people and keep people and make the people who are already here very proud of them? And I don't know what our strategy should be about saying, you know, I think we need to be careful to say, hey, we got, we have like 20 properties, a hundred and thirty million dollars, these are old numbers, I'm sure the numbers are much higher now than they were right, um, six or eight months ago, maybe based upon construction costs, but uh, we need to be careful to say, we, we don't wanna say doom and gloom or buildings are falling apart because there's a, there's a pernicious narrative that could come with that. But just to say, look, we've been, we've been barely surviving with, on duct tape and chewing gum and all sorts of other things to keep our facilities in good, in working condition. But here are the things we need to do so that we can be, we can say, gee, we have what we consider to be current facilities and here are some strategic investments in those, you know, whatever those facilities are to say, here's a top of the line science lab, or here's a destination athletic facility, or, or whatever it is. And, um, it's, I think it's easier to get the community behind a glitzy thing than it is a, like, uh, meat potatoes, facility maintenance budget, but I think both are, are direly needed. And the other thing I wanted to say is we, we began talking about class sizes and staff. And we made a really difficult, um, decision on benefits and, and pay. It's not, you know, we can't do that again, like we, it's not sustainable. So, um, and I think, as, I think we, as everyone who is present mentioned, it was not a good decision, but our options were bad. You know, and so, but they were driven a hundred percent by budget. And, um, I think we, we have, it would be good to be in a better position in the future to say, look, we, we had a tough decision, but we were able to, we were able to get the resources to invest in our people in all the ways that we could. And we weren't driven by, gee, if we make this, this decision, we may be insolvent in three to five years. Because that's, that's really what we were looking at. Um, but it's, it's difficult to make that, to make that pitch that 85% or something of our budget is people. Um, that's a more difficult thing to, for the average person to see when they drive by a building. But I think those are, those things are both really badly needed.
I wanna go back to something you said, Dr. Johnson. Um, you said, um, sponsorship in classrooms, do you mean, um, like advertisements on walls and pencil cups and et cetera, et cetera?
So, so all of that, you probably did some, or like, or, or the door itself says, welcome in to, uh, 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 you know.
Dr. Johnson's Laboratory.
JAM, uh, 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 the, the history class sponsored by JAM. Right? So, so it's, it's kind of, it, 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 it's a way, but it is, not everybody is actually a fan of public private partnerships. Because the, the, the whole idea is there is, I, I think for a lot of us, there is also this, uh, ah, I can't believe, I'm about to use this word, and I despise this word, actually using it, but some, there's a moral code that people, as it relates to branding. And if we know anything about businesses, businesses, uh, do some things well and do some things not so well. And so when you think about these partnerships, you potentially have to just be strategic in, in how they're craft, in public craft, how they're, how they're crafted and out, you know, out clauses if, uh, cause I, I could imagine that, uh, uh, say at a high school, a business sponsored something and then environmentally, uh, uh, something comes out and all juniors and seniors walk out. But we're in this agreement with them for actually like three years. But the student body demands they come to Superintendent Johnson or whoever. We have to do, then we end up potentially breaking a potential clause and having to, but that's kind of your question, yeah, that is. You, you walk in and you see, you know, uh, uh, like JAM around the wall, or the, the door itself is, and so it's, uh,
Memorial old RVs.
Oh, yeah, the RV.
Yeah, think about the Purdue Farm line.
Well, I, I say it that way because I think, Dr. Johnson, you're mostly holding it up as a almost absurd alternative, but maybe the only alternative we have if we don't agree as a community to fund, to fund our schools properly.
Yes, so, so, yes, so the absurdity, the absurdity actually, when there's actually no other avenue path we can take.
Right, I, I'm not, I, I would, I don't think anybody thinks that you're advocating for the memorial old RVs. Or those, nor Jimmy Johnson, whatever, right? Um, and that's why I think unfortunately, like there isn't really any other way for us to go forward, but to, but to get on this, like, we have to be strategic, it has to be regular, because we've seen in 30 years since the funding formula, the state is not going to keep up with us. The state is not going to keep up with our needs. And we've seen in the last 12 years that the state is not even going to keep up with inflation, and therefore there's only one way that a community has to invest in its schools. Because the state has not done enough for us. There have been, you know, times where now we're not gonna buy any, where we have zero additional dollars. And so if we're talking about investment, the thing that, that struck me when I first learned it and that I think continues to raise eyebrows as I talk to people about why we need a referendum, is the fact that we fund our students at the 32nd percentile in the state. That means that people of Eau Claire effectively value education less than two-thirds of our counterparts in the state. I don't think that's true because everyone I talk to, even those people that have wild disagreements with me, bring a value of, our, our schools are important. Our schools are, are the lifeblood. Well, we don't have any other recompense to say, but if, if they are so valuable to us, then how are we funding them? Below almost everybody in the state, below two-thirds of the people in the state. There, there's no other mechanism available to us aside from things like a public-private partnership, which, you know, I hope that I've through absurdity made my distaste for such a thing, uh, clear. And, and it has to, like, and then, you know, it, it's funny to weigh on one hand the idea that, you know, there's resistance to investing for whatever, whatever the reasons are. And the idea that we have to continually reinvest, because until we have some sort of different funding structure for the state, that is our only mechanism to invest. And Dr. Johnson, you're, you're dead right that some of these buildings, they, these things have to be done. You know, Josh Phil, sorry, Commissioner Clemens, Commissioner Lysik, for, I think, I think I started on, uh, Demo and Trends, I mean, you and I started the same year, maybe six years ago now. Right? And you joined us not too long after that, maybe the next, you know, the year after, or maybe the year after that, four or five years for you. And Demo and Trends has had the same, like, we have to expand our buildings. We have to take care of South, we have to do maintenance at Roosevelt's and make sure that that building is back up to speed if we're going to continue to use it as an elementary school, which we are because we have our awesome dual language version program at Longfellow. It has to be done. I mean, there's always going to be resistance because it does always involve the community saying, we will give more of ourselves to our schools. But I, I just don't see how we can continue to push it back. And then, but, because there's never gonna be that good time to say, we now need to regularly do this. And that 32nd percentile might just be the operations part of it, and it doesn't. So it does need to be a blend because we have a hundred million dollars of upkeep and we have to improve our schools. There, so what I was gonna say, I just don't see any other way to do that. But to, but to be bold and to say, I don't think the value of our community has a, is that 32nd percentile of funding. And we have, if we want Eau Claire to succeed, we have to raise that, we have to be intentional about it. We have to be bold about it. I, I do wonder, you know, we've got four months to come up with a question, but that is a lot of pressure to be talking about it. But is moving it back to spring gonna reduce the resistance that we see? And I don't know. And, and that's a reasonable conversation, you know, but I, I think we, we have to, you have to take a shot and we have to start being able to say, we can't continue on with this. One thing that I, and I'll try to make this my last thing. One thing that I did, uh, hear from the community in the session that I was at on the 16th, uh, that felt visionary and felt like it tied into investment was that night, there seemed to be a big focus on, uh, the environment. And the fact that if we are going to do a capital referendum, it is, it is the perfect time to not only invest in something that adds to the value of our schools, it adds to the appearance of our schools if we wanna look at it from a fact that might drive by. But that we also have this commitment to our climate and environment. That green energy has to be a priority and green construction and green remodeling needs to be a priority going forward. And that is something that I think we can be visionary about because it, it also satisfies those that want us to be more, that, that for whatever reason say, we have to be more fiscally responsible while investing upfront in solar panels, even in a state like Wisconsin that doesn't do very, like, at all with, with state rebates for these sorts of things. In, in half of the lifespan of those solar panels, we turn the amount around. So in 13 years, we make our money back and a 25-year minimum ma, like, uh, warranty on our solar panels. So we double our money. So in addition, you talk about expanding opportunities, when we add green things to our schools, we have more opportunity to bring that to our students and teach them about it in our schools. Our next year in our high schools, right, we're starting a green energy and careers class that's available. I know this because my son and I, who are, that's going in the ninth grade, we went through literally every single class to say like, what are everything that you wanna take? And I was jealous that I, I might try to audit that because it sounded really great to me. But imagine being able to do that and work that into our science curriculum at the elementary schools. When we expand it. Imagine bringing, able to bring those displays that we have in the high schools to the middle schools and bring that down a level to see this is the impact that we're having. So I think that's something that, that stuck out to me and I, you know, maybe it was just that I was in that one session and, but recognizing that we have a commitment to that. Recognizing that we need to envision and that in my mind works on two levels. It works on saves us money in the long run to invest now, meets our environmental commitments, envisions for the future. I think that's something that we have to, you know, the capital part of whatever we do, I think that's something that we need to remember and the administration needs to remember to build into, you know, RFPs on a future thing. That, that has to be a critical component of what we're looking for. And that needs to be factored into the amount that we eventually ask for, whether it's in the fall or later, I guess. But we don't have any other choice, right? There's no other way to do it, but to be bold and to be intentional and to keep saying, we have to keep reinvesting in our schools because that is the lifeblood of our community.
Possibly an education piece, I'm not sure, because I don't, I don't feel like I have a good understanding of what people, you know, know or how closely they're following the state funding structures. But an education piece, and I think there can be, uh, maybe people are simply not aware or might even have misinformation. The idea, well, why aren't you targeting, why, why don't you have so much of a focus on the state funding structure and changing that? Well, we do. Um, and I think there's so much, you know, there's so much that goes on. It's not, you know, the community can't track everything, but just getting the word out that, that all of us work at, both as individuals and as groups like school boards through Wisconsin Association of School Boards. We are constantly working at remedies to the state funding structure. It, it's not as if we're passively sitting by and saying, well, you know, throwing up our hands, ah, there's something.
We're partnering with WPEA for the same thing. I mean, they're a huge partner in advocating on budget issues.
Right. So it, it is constant activism by Eau Claire School Board as well as school boards everywhere to make changes structurally at the state level. So that, you know, and that's an education part of that.
Yeah, the, the, the challenge for me though is, is all, all this, all this really like sounds great. This, this is really good. This is, I, I, I think I've probably benefited from being around such positive people, uh, 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 twice a month on Mondays for extended hours. Uh, however, I guess the, the counter, when we talk about that messaging though, is, you know, what I've been thinking about is why is everything, anything that we're talking about here, why does it matter to the people who don't have children? Why does it matter to the people who are not employed by this particular business? We, we obviously know there are some issues that actually bring in attention from those that don't have those potential, potential investments. But this is, how, how do you sell? You know, I, I, I think about the, the older, older woman that wanted to give me 10 bucks, uh, for my, my, my campaign, uh, but she says she, she would give more, but she's on a fixed income. And as I told her, I appreciate your willingness to actually give you those $10, but you can do a whole lot more with those $10 than actually I could do with this campaign. You keep your $10, I appreciate the support, right? So it, it, it's telling, telling that person, uh, 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 how would you use that example? But tell, telling a person who's just moved here, that's like retired and or, uh, why should a retiree, think about, do we, how, how do we message? Think about that great experience that your child had in it. What does that look like for the, for the next child? And, and, and I think also what we've seen is part of that growth are multi-generation homes and families that navigate this particular run. And don't you want that for your, your, your grandkid? So I really think we have to, you know, cause I, I think some of us make an underlying assumption maybe, uh, that, uh, uh, everybody likes kids and they want them to have a positive experience. That's not, that may not actually be the case. But there are also, we, we, we also have to work, think about, there are, there, there's also a segment of our community that believes the current model of how, uh, uh, public education system is run, it's an inefficient model. So I think adequately putting forward kind of how, how all the dollars, cause that's the other thing in my two years, I realized like, yeah, this is, not only is this an efficient model, uh, in, in some cases, uh, I think we just created money, but it's, I'm not sure we're able to, uh, 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 create money, but it just appears, it appears that way in, in, and I think that's kind of how we have to work. We have to work the messaging for the individuals that all of what we're talking about in, in especially these positive pieces, that doesn't move their needle. So what moves, what moves, what moves the needle? And for me, it's that attracting of, uh, 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 a new and more diverse workforce. Speaking to what, uh, Commissioner Clemens talked about. Yeah, you know, we bring more, we, we bring more workers with families here, that adds to what we. to what we, we bring to the table. It also potentially brings, you know, Eau Claire, I don't know how, how do you bid for, like, show choir competitions? So, you know, that brings, that potentially revenue, so working with, you know, what is that, Visit Eau Claire, you know, all of these pieces in terms of, in terms of the messaging. So I, I think that's, that's that piece of, how do we just, how does all of the good things that we're talking about, how does it matter to the people who it doesn't matter to?
Well, I can tell you just from my, in my professional world, how it matters to people is that we have thousands of unfilled jobs in our community, thousands, and almost all of them fall into manufacturing, architecture, construction, health science, or business management administration, almost all of them. I mean, there's, there's a huge gap, and what speaks to our, like, I mean, these are, thi- this, this is hu- huge part of our economy in this region, in the Chippewa Valley, and those businesses value education, they value what we do because they want to make sure that the students in the buildings understand that, hey, right outside your door are these fantastic companies, these fantastic places to work, and we want to make sure that you're prepared, not only with the technical skills necessary, but with the, with the, the soft skills, the employability skills, the social emotional skills to be successful, right? So, they, that public-private partnership, I don't see it necessarily as a sponsorship on the door, I see it as a, more of a monetary investment in outcomes, I think that that's probably more likely what you might see, and I think what is even already happening, or there's already interest in that happening in our community, from a business perspective, but I, I think that the community gets excited when they see the outcomes for kids, and so my, my question about all of this is, Phil, do you think that we can articulate a vision for ongoing, or, you know, like, or, or whatever, a re, not, I don't want to say it, long-term.
Strategic.
Strategic referendum, that would maybe be a combination of facilities and operational, and some big dreamy project every time that gets people all jazzed up about it, you know, whether that's, you know, a new, couple new labs, again, the business community gets real excited when we start putting labs in places that get the workforce all ready, I mean, seriously, that's how you do it, you have to hit all the categories, right? We have to be, we have to hit all the categories. So can we, can we create that vision with this first one that we're all talking about right now here, by November? Or do we need it to, or by August? But, or do we need it, do we need more time?
So, I would say, yes, we can create that, that, that vision, but we need to do it very, very quickly, and in, in budget development, we've been talking very philosophically about kind, you know, the school district is the, the mechanism that drives workforce development, that, um, it, it is all of these things, that attracts people to the district, people bring their kids to this area because they want good schools, the education fuels, i- i- it's the, the lifeblood of everything, right? So, now what we need to do is have an idea of what is in this referendum so that we can get on the roadshow and start selling that. And if it's fifteen million dollars for, and I'm just pulling numbers out of the air, if it's fifteen million dollars for sustainability, that's a return of investment, and six thou- six million dollars that will just basically fix the stuff that in the, um, facilities report says has to be done right now, and, um, you know, South was supposed to be on the last referendum, so, and Demo Trends, I think twenty million?
For South?
For South?
Uh, it's now about twenty-six.
Twenty-six million, so twenty-six fourteen, we're at forty, another forty-six, um, and then fourteen million dollars for, for workforce development and the creation, so now we're at sixty million dollars. So, let's put that together and put it in a roadshow and start selling it to people, and maybe we can get people excited about that, but we, we need to move from kind of the theoretical to, this is what's going to be in this referendum, and this is what we're going to promise you, and this is why you ought to vote for it. And I'm not sure we have that time, but if we made decisions relatively quickly and did it, you know, I'm sure that the things that I just threw out, people would say, "Yeah, but what about this?" And, "Yeah, but what about that?" And, um, there, there's other things that ought to be included in the referendum, and that's where, as you add things to this, we're, we're talking about the first year of a referendum, and maybe that's prioritized in the next four years, like, South was, because South was pushed down the road and
South was Roosevelt.
A two-section school, and I'm down on Trends.
I know, I know.
So, Phil, I would like to say that, and I do, I do think we'll have more time than you think as before. You know, certainly, uh, sounds like budget development has fully transitioned over to referendum development, which is great, that's, I think, what we were hoping for when we extended budget development out through this, at least this next year, if not however long it's needed, maybe it is referendum development ongoing, I don't know.
If the charge is for us to sift and winnow down and bring it back here, then I am
I'm very happy for that to be, for, for, you know, budget development to, to lead, obviously, you know, we have, you know, the reorganization of the board in, in the first meeting of May, so, you know, this or whatever, it's worth it for me right now. But looking ahead at the upcoming calendar as well as we look from, um, our monitoring cycle basically ends in that first meeting in May, and there is not monitoring over the summer, the next, and, as I kind of looked at ahead, at like, what would the, the monitoring report cycle look like, you know, I've pushed, you know, I was just fiddling with it to think about what, what could it look like, if, you know, push a few things around, we don't have the first draft time, there's a lot of just regular board meeting time that can be dedicated to work session for the board, to do that work over the summer, I mean, I'm talking, I'm, I'm looking at, you know what, uh, if you look at like a, a June and July where we generally only have one meeting anyway, we will have to have like a, uh, you know, a regular session where we'd have to do, you know, the, the consents, and, and there are some things, but then, that's an hour at that, at that meeting, probably, that can be full work session in July, and both meetings in August, frankly, and then, you know, then monitoring things back up, and, you know, the first one is probably, unless the board, like, changes the order, it's like, you know, thirteen, which is the succession plan, which should probably be on consent, but then we do have, uh, two and three that come up, you know, that are the equity commitment, the climate commitment, those are bigger, but that still leaves us a lot of time. So there, there is, you know, the board in its own regular work meetings, outside of adding additional work sessions, which I think probably could be necessary at some point, but has a, does potentially have a lot of time for itself, combine that, if budget development, you know, leaves and, you know, really starts to take the reins on, you know, like, well, what's our dream list? Combines that with that survey of like, what might we be able to tolerate, right? Maybe we need to shoot higher, last time we, they went a little higher than, than what was recommended, but it passed very strongly, that means we probably could have gone more. You know, but the, the, some of that winnowing, like, I, I think we do have actually a lot of time available to us, just in the schedule, that doesn't mean that there might need to, not need to be additional commitment of work session time or roadshow time, as it were, by the board in the upcoming months, but just with the board calendar and, you know, I, I think there is a lot of opportunity to do a lot of work to get it to that point, and if what needs to happen right now is, you know, budget development starts having that discussion about what do we think is the, you know, the dream list, and it comes back to the full board, and the board can talk about it and say, "Well, what about this, what about that?" And, you know, then we weigh those things back in, and, and yes, some things are not going to sift out that we all want, or, you know, that, you know, each thing wants, but I, I think there's, I think there is actually a lot of time, we have a, we have a fairly open schedule for work, and we can dedicate it as needed, you know, our monitoring cycle doesn't kick back in, and then it's just less monitoring because we won't have the first drafts all the time.
You have to add our elementary capacity in North High School to your list, have urgent needs.
I just really wanted to go back to this, because I don't think that public-private partnership is absurd at all, I think it's necessary. Like, I, no, I have a distaste for it, too, like, I'm the, I'm the last person that I would want to see, like, advocating for, like, selling the attention of a student like a commodity, but like, if you want green energy, or you want a smaller class size, or you want, like, better mental health support for everyone in your district, you need money to do that, and you, if you can't rely on a referendum, where are you going to get that money from? You need it from somewhere, and if your community has already showed that, you know, it's not necessarily willing to give you that money, you have to be willing to maybe, like, do something that you aren't completely comfortable with.
Well, I could, I can add a little bit, because the first time you had asked about the partnerships, I found Eau Claire to be very generous, but I don't think we tap into that enough. And, you know, the things that inspired me as a superintendent, for example, at Temenee, I haven't had a chance to watch the news, okay, but I do know that there was a spot on the Ora Trust, very generous, um, group of people, um, Dale Southern, you know, heads that up, and it, they helped the entire district with many different projects, some larger, some smaller, but the food pantry's at the high schools at both North and Memorial, I know it was featured today, I believe, I believe they were at Memorial, and they're a, a major partner and sponsor in this, as well as, you know, outside your track, the Ora Track, and, and future work on concession areas, that's a tremendously generous, um, gift and partnership, yet it still pales in comparison to what we really need and want in the district. Another example would be North High Spray Booth, Global Finishing Systems and Osteo, True Build, like, that was tremendously inspiring for me, and it's a win-win-win, it's a win for the kids, it's a win for the staff, it's a win for families, and it's a win for business, and with Erica's position, she gets to see that in many different districts, but talk about the, you know, the inspiration for businesses, because then it helps their workforce, these kids learn talent, they, they learn how to use this machinery, very technical, and the teachers benefit from it as well, and it, it just, those things need to continue, but Eau Claire's a very generous community, we need to, we need oath, quite frankly, and I don't think, there's a lot of untapped potential. But you see it, you would see it at your school, and sometimes you just don't, don't know it. My former district, we did have the sponsorship room for Project Lead the way, we had Anderson Windows, we had Pittsburgh Paints, there were sponsors, you know, like a race car almost, but it was in the classroom, because that, those, um, the materials and the machinery are so expensive, um, and at that time, our district couldn't afford that without the help, and, so it's really, you know, you'll see it, but we need that and so much more, but it, it really is a tremendous benefit to, to our community, and it really, it just feels good, so.
And Erica, you brought up, there are obviously other ways to do it, I just want us to be aware that maybe we shouldn't be heading for kids graduating from Red Robin's Elementary School. So, or something like that, like, there are, there are ways to do that.
If Red Robin came and said, "Let's lean your elephant," they wouldn't say that.
I bet they would if we gave them an attractive pricing on it.
So, to back to Commissioner Johnson's point earlier, about how do you make the, how do you articulate this mission to the people of Eau Claire who aren't directly connected to the school, and to be clear, many people in the community are either directly connected or graduates of, more than most places, um, but there's still a lot of people out there, and maybe those peo-, there are people who are, who are graduates and are like, "I, I'm done with that, did my time, if, as you were, I don't need it anymore," but, um, I think you need to make the, the case compelling that investing in our school is investing in the long-term, not just prosperity, but survival of this community, if we do not invest in our schools, then you're saying we're not, we don't have confidence in the future of our community, and if you live here and you're invested here, you own, you own land or property, or you, you don't, and you just have your, your ties here, um, you know, that should be, that should be a compelling mission, is, if you, if you have, I'm not talking about, like, touchy-feely stuff, but if you're invested here and you want the community to be prosperous in the future, it requires our ongoing commitment to do that, um, and if we fail to do that, there's any number of communities you can look at where they did fail to do that, and it, it damages a place for generations, you know, that you can't just make up for lost time with, with a short-term investor, this is like an ongoing thing. And, you know, for, for quite some time, Eau Claire was, was, um, was frankly on the rocks economically, um, and I, I think the people who, who have been around for a while remember that, and, uh, the place that I moved from most recently, in Dubuque, Iowa, it was really on the rocks, like, in, in the eighties, they had employment above twenty percent for multiple years in a row, and now it's, it's regularly one of the places in the country that has the lowest unemployment, because the people who survived that said, "Never again is this going to happen to our city," and the way that we do that is we make sure that our public institutions are solid, and so any kind of tribulations that happen in the world around us, we're going to be invested in each other and this place. And, you know, that was from the schools, the tech colleges, everything on down, um, and, and as a consequence, they've been able to weather some of those more recent storms, because their people were prepared, um, and they, they were resilient, and their institutions were, too. You know, that's, that's existential for the average person to try to contemplate, but, but really, it comes down to, are you invested in this place or not? And, um, you know, people will, well, I work in municipal government, people let you know if there's, the snow's not falling in front of their house within a few hours, but, you know, and, and they'll let you know when the roads are, are starting to go to heck. And those are, those are some of the most common calls we get out of anything, you know, or if you turn on the water and it starts, and it's an odd color or smells, you know, but it's a little bit more difficult if you're not the person walking in the school every day and saying, "Geez, this place hasn't changed since I graduated forty years ago." Like, we, we need to let them know that this is, this is critical, as much or more so than some of those, those infrastructure things that just hit you as soon as you walk out the door, um, because our schools are what prepare people to be successful. Even if you, even if you're one of the persons who perhaps didn't have the best experience, unfortunately, um, in, in school, you know, regardless, you know, that, this is what keeps the place afloat.
You know, it, it's interesting, and I, and I, and I agree with, I, I agree with, uh, uh, most of what you said, I, 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 I think what ends up happening, though, in a, in a, in a cha- in a changing society, and with changing demographics, for some individuals, maybe school doesn't look the way they envisioned schools to look. And, 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 and for me, when I, I, when I, I think of twenty-first century schools, and I know this kind of upsets a lot of people, but when I, when I think of twenty-first century schools, I right away think of inclusiveness, I, I think of accessibility, I, I, I think of students with and without disabilities, interchangeably getting learning experiences, because the support's there, the professionals are trained. I, I think about access to opportunities in all extracurricular activities. But I also know, okay, putting emails, that actually, that's not actually the envision of, of an educational experience, so, when you, when you, will you reinvest, or will you reinvest in your children? Will you reinvest in the children that actually may not actually look like the children that you attended the school with when you were there? And, and, and can we prepare individuals to, that's, that's the vision, and I, and I think how, how, how we promote that vision is, that things have changed, you know, I, I used to have a former neighbor, and, and, and I love, I love both, I, I love this couple, uh, 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 unfortunately, the wife passed away, but, and, and this kind of explains to me, they gave me a, a great background on the whole north-south division here. That PTA school board meeting where it was decided that actually they were going to do Memorial and get rid of it, neighbors didn't talk again, I believe, in that particular meeting. And, you know, certain individuals envisioned an educational experience that was one high school versus two. And I, I know from the people who've come back here, I, I still don't get why it's so divisive, like, the divisive north and south, given the fact we're only like sixty-seven thousand people, I do not understand it, but, as I've been told, I'm not a native of, of I do not understand it, but as I've been told, I'm not a native of, of this particular area, I just don't, I, I, I don't understand. But that's that whole idea of like the, what you, what you envision, right? And I would hope that when we message in that envisioning and that reinvestment, realize that we also could be deliberately and unintentionally, if the, if the board believes in this, intentionally describe the type of students that we're talking to. And that those types of students that you're investing in come across all demographics. I'll pay, you know, that's, that's additional money for me that I, I, I'm definitely willing to, to, to reinvest. So, but I agree with everything.
Yeah, yeah, I agree a hundred percent, but I think, you know, I, I'm not, I don't know how, how we do it, but I really must. And, you know, the schools look different. I, I graduated from high school 20 years ago this, this fall. And I, I feel like that there are some, some quiet times where I'm like, man, I'm getting old. But the, but high schools look different than when I was there. And I'm not talking, like, these didn't exist. Like, we had a computer lab and that's where almost every single device in the entire school was located. People now carry around computers in their pockets that can, that could have guided a Apollo 13 landing. Like, world has changed. And I think people on the, at some level understand that, that, that our schools must be current for everyone. Again, because that's, that's the critical mission. And I don't, I don't know that we're going to get through to everyone that public schools have to work for everyone. You know, obviously, we've gotten feedback that, that's, is shared by some who disagree with that, that purpose. But I think we need, we need to be direct. We need to be direct that public schools must work for everyone who's here and everyone who is going to be here. And recognize that today, we have some challenges in doing that. Both because of our facilities and the resources we have to serve everyone. But if we want people even who are skeptical to feel like, I want to live in a prosperous place, we need to make sure that it's prosperous for everyone or there's going to, there will be a lot of costs for everyone. There'll be things, there'll be a lot of, a lot of peril for communities that, that don't view it as an all-in situation. And I think regardless of, of how you feel about, about how some people feel about inclusion or, or being an equitable community, that, that's, that's what, that's the fact. Like, when, when we, when we don't take care of everyone, it causes problems. And it causes, yeah, it causes problems for everyone and it threatens your livelihood whether you, whether you are bought into it or not. Now, I don't know if that, that kind of messaging works in a referendum. Because usually you want to be very positive about, about the future that we're aspiring to be able to support with whatever investment we're proposing. But I, but I do agree that we must be clear that, that inclusion and equity is equal to any other purpose of, of the district. As it should be and that it requires resources.
I think now, I'd like to transition back to Abby where she's going to go on with our facilities assessment, master planning. And I'll be, probably be able to come back to more of this discussion, but I'd like to, to propose us, if we could go back to the PowerPoint for probably the last five, six slides.
And I'm just going to say, why don't, if it's okay with the rest of the board, why don't we not do the board debrief tonight to give us those 10 extra minutes? I still want to end right at nine to respect the reduced time and so the two of you can duke it out wherever the TV available for the national championship. But maybe we'll just plan to spend the full 25 minutes and we will, I'll call for an interim motion at nine o'clock, if that's okay with everybody.
All right, so lots of good discussion happening for sure. And kind of, you know, this approach that we took and are working through from the facility study that happened in December. So, you know, we have our list of, here's what we really need. And we have our list of kind of, here's what we want and here's that survive versus thrive. I don't even know that I would say thrive, but just how, how can we do education better? And so when we kind of look at that big picture, you know, we need to really have that master plan that we're updating every five years. Now, every year, we come to you and say, hey, here's our vision for the next five years as far as a capital plan. But this is more in-depth even than what we do. So then again, kind of like even Phil was talking about just a little while ago, what's those immediate needs? What do we need to do in the next year, two years? What's emerging, which needs to be done in the next five? And then what's those future needs, more of that five to 10-year plan? And then you have to kind of determine from that immediate and emerging, what can you cover through capital improvement versus what's, what's referendum needs? You know, we've been talking about 2.2 million a year would be an ideal for deferred maintenance. While we have 21 buildings, you know, that we look at. And so we put, if we commit that we need to do an upgrade at South and we're not going to go to referendum, that 2.2 million dollars is what, what room are we going to do this year? What room are we going to do next year? What room are we going to do after that? And guess what? We're not going to do any of our other buildings. Well, that doesn't work, right? And when we start thinking about it. So we have to really, referendum, capital is at least part of that conversation because we can't address all of our facilities. There's just not enough money, we have too many buildings. So, back in probably January, we had a conversation as far as budget development and we had a brief presentation to the board as well that really talked about how do those break down by schools? So one of the things that we shared at that point in time was kind of, here's our overall project cost from the architects and engineers. Again, facilities, not those, including those nice to have and some of those green initiatives. We were sitting about 44.8 million. So my team from the building services group really kind of went through, and there were things in that plan that we had asked for them to identify for us. Some of those things are just normal day-to-day operations that we do every single year. Or that we know that we can do and we don't need somebody to come in and do for us. So when they went through that list and really looked at those priorities for the next 10 years, realistically, at this point in time, they feel like that 44.8 million is really more about 32 million. And that was again, addressing those needs from now until the next 10 years. We can get down to more levels of detail, right now, we're just trying to stay at that higher level to say, what do we need? And what does our building really need for the next 10 years? So then we went and did the same thing for, for our secondary facilities. So I think you'll remember that 79.8 million dollar price tag. Keep in mind, you've got a big chunk of that at South, which we have been talking about for several years. Memorial as well, based off on that plan, has some needs. Now again, that was adding additional space at Memorial as well and kind of the same for North. And then redoing some of those common areas, looking at Fab Lab and some of those things that really might make some desirable. Now it's not, again, some of those expansive things that we might look at, athletic facilities, for example. But some of those things were, you know, kind of outlined and recommended. When my team really looked at it again, really kind of estimating, what does that look like? You're going to see not much of a change from South Middle School, which doesn't surprise us because we know that there's a big upgrade. Kind of like Mr. Johnson talked about earlier and the fact that, you know, that's been delayed. That upgrade, we did the same upgrade to DeLong 10, 11 years ago. So that's why you're not seeing much change there. Memorial, again, kind of what was identified and what does our team need, some differences, same thing with North. So really, that 79 is more estimated at the 56 million. Then when we look at our other facilities, you know, what's kind of needed? This building is exactly the same, there's a lot of needs in this building, as you can see. And then some needs at the service center by the architects and engineers and really kind of what does our team need? Now, I don't want to say that the value or the emphasis on the architects and engineers is inaccurate. They just identified every single thing that should be on our radar because that's really helping us and we asked them to prepare us. What do we need to do in the next 10 years? They didn't get intricately evolved of, here's what's part of our maintenance budget over here, or here are those things that we just take care of on a regular basis. And so that's why there's such a difference between those numbers. So if we kind of put that all together, and I think Commissioner Clemens, you talked about it earlier, right? We had identified about 130 million at that point in time. And you can see really 91.6 is where we're at. If we kind of break that down into priority one and priority two, what's the next five years, what do we need to focus on? You can see we're more in that 56 million. That's looking at the high and the medium. That low priority, it's important, but we're looking at more of a five to 10-year model instead of, you know, right now in these first five years. So then you can see that breakdown again, how that changes from the elementary and the secondary and the other. Now, we do have a lot of information from the facility study as well. Are there some things that we could do to make our facilities more like the Hudson's of the world or maybe the Verona's or something like that? And so those aren't in these numbers because it was something that I wasn't sure where the board wanted to talk about that and have that information. And so, you know, at some point, we're going to have to prioritize and make some decisions about, you know, what is it going to be included in the referendum and what are our goals? And then we're going to probably have to prioritize which buildings as well and what are the goals for those buildings? And I think that's some of the work, that budget development, we can do with our team and doing that. But what else is the vision? And so I think we have a lot of the data that we need. I think it's really kind of finalizing it, putting it together and then looking at, how do those green initiatives play into these numbers? And what can we do? And can we do some things? I know Fab Labs have been talked about and redoing media centers to be the center of Fab Labs. The culinary, a lot of that was done. Phil, in the last probably five years, we had two phases to update the culinary spaces. Tech ed was on the list, you know, we need to do some upgrades for our tech ed areas. Music upgrades as well. So I think that there's, you know, each building has a, has a specific thing that needs to be done. Unfortunately, we have tough decisions to make because I'm not sure what a referendum for 91 million or 127 million would look like. You have to start thinking about how much does that cost? How does it impact the tax levy? Now, this, these numbers are specifically projects that we want to issue debt for. We know that as a government entity, we can issue debt for 20 years. Our bond rating right now should be relatively strong because our fund balance is higher. So what does that look like? And that's where we have to get the experts as far as debt issuance going and looking at where will our tax levy be? How does that impact? And so those are next step conversations as well that we need to have that will give us some more information. But that's why I was really critical to have some of these conversations tonight. For me, to gather and listen to what you're saying so that way then I can go to the bond companies and say, okay, can you do me, do some projections for me? What could a 20-year debt issuance look like? If we're going to talk about a high-grade model like we did in 2016, then how much of a debt payment can we afford and still leave some money for operations? And so really tying those together, or do you separate it out? Somebody mentioned earlier, some districts are using the model that they're going for capital now and they're talking with their community to say, hey, we're going capital now. We have some S R dollars we want to be using, but expect us to come back for operational in two to three years. And that might be a strategy that we want to talk about as well as we look at some of the survey data and some of the information that came forward. We need to do a better job educating because there's this impression from our community that you should only have one referendum at a time. And then they didn't know that we would come back for referendum in 2016 and that's very hard for us, right? Because I know in 2016, we talked about, we have a debt drop in 21, 21. So expect us to come back to look at the South and some of these others. So where did that story get lost? Where did that message get lost? I mean, that's a little concerning when Phil, after you shared with your group that, what? You're coming back for a referendum? And I was like, whoa, wait a second. But yeah, we have community members that believe that, so that's a little scary. I think, because I thought, okay, where, where did our message get lost in 2016? We talked about a lot of being able to pay that debt payment, but still give us some money for operations and how that works. And I think for so long in our community, there hadn't been a referendum. And then when we go to referendum, we went for a larger dollar amount to take care of deferred maintenance, but also to provide some operational dollars. And the reason why it was 15 years was that we could pay debt, right? I mean, we talked about that, we wanted to have that flexibility to be able to do the deferred maintenance, get our projects done and pay for it for the next 15 years. And so with somewhere, that got lost. Because when you're talking with our community members and they were saying, they're just surprised. It's like, okay, where, where did we lose the message on that? And what, what changed in five years? Cause I know we were having that conversation five years ago when we talked about South and Rose about being pulled out. It was pulled out because of the dollars. And we knew if we did those projects, we wouldn't have money for operations because of the debt payment and it would be too much. So what do we do differently this time to help our community understand? And do we focus? And I'm going to go to our next slide. You know, really our next steps are, you know, some conversations around the determination of the date of referendum. What, what should be included? Are we going to go capital? Are you going to go operational? Are we going to go both? And then what additional information do we need to provide you in budget development? Well, I'll take really good notes because we are working on this and trying to be able to make sure that you as board members have all of that information you need. And I think we've had a lot of good conversation. We still need some direction of how can we help you to assist in this process going forward?
Abby, do you think it would help to talk a little bit about the RMP process, but more, not the process, but specifically what the consultant will do? Because that's a, that's sort of kind of standard best practice within referendum work, so what they'll be able to contribute?
Sure. Yeah, thanks Laurie. So as we talked about earlier in the agenda, we have determined a vendor that is going to assist us in gathering some information for upcoming referendum. And so now is really our opportunity to start determining, what do we want to know? How do we want to ask our community? So the way the survey process will work is they will get a list of our likely voters in the community and in, in our, in our district. And then they will pick a random sample of likely voters in the election. They do a lot of statistical data. And then they will ask them a series of questions related to the school district. And then the goal from that would be for them to assist us with determining how much will our community support? What will our community support? And what do they value? There's some general information that we can gather as well, and I think this was helpful in the last referendum, was how do you get the bulk of the information about the school district? Is it in the media? Is it through flyers and things like that? So that can also help us with our strategy in the referendum going forward. But I know in the last referendum, we did this type of a survey as well. And it really helped define the wording of the question, the dollar amount of the question, where did people get their information? How do they rate the schools? You know, there was a couple of questions, just basic of, how, how do you rate the schools? There were even a couple of questions on there that, you know, basically led into, I'm not going to support a referendum no matter what you tell me. And that was a question upfront, let me give you some education, does that change your decision? So there was a lot of valuable information that I felt that we gained from the survey. And I think that I will be an advocate and that's why it was as well. Like, that was really valuable and that was a really good investment to help us being successful in our last referendum. And so I think that's one of the biggest next steps, I would say, for budget development or our referendum committee, is what do we want to know? And how can we utilize this firm to help us answer some of those questions?
Did I hit all this, the high points Laurie?
Okay.
I guess for me, I, I want to see it, I, I would really love to see that. Thank you Abby, by the way.
You're welcome.
But the, I, I think that that, the idea of that master plan and maybe a, a couple of referenda out from here and what that looks like, right? Like what are, kind of where are we going would be really helpful for me. And again, like I, I want to respect question number one here or next step number one, Phil. It's that if you feel, or if the committee feels like, I mean, I think I probably fall slightly more in the camp of what Dr. Johnson was saying. But I, I don't think there is the right time and right now, whether that's November or April. I mean, it depends on how much, you know, the climate steadies over the next few months. But I, I don't know if that, that's going to make a whole heck of a lot of difference. But I think the, the more important thing is I want to, I want to be able to talk to the community in a, in a, in a, or at least a more complete picture of where we're headed. So if you, if you guys don't feel like you can get there by, you know, within, with a reasonable amount of time for us to go out and talk to the community by November, then I'm fine if it gets pushed back. But I don't want to just push it back because we're afraid they're going to say no. That I don't want, I don't want that to be the reason. I want it, I want, you know, I want the reason to be that, you know, we just want a little more time to more articulate our vision. Or the district to articulate where it really wants to see our investment go. Cause I think this is a great time and I've, I've said this a lot the last few months. Is it, it's a really great time for our community to reinvest in our schools. I mean, we all are doing that in our community. Like, we're doing that every day because we want to come back stronger. It's been a hard shake of it here the last couple of years, you know? And we need, we need to come back and we need to reinvest in our kids and in, and in our future. Our businesses, our community, like they need us to do. Our businesses, like, they need us to do that. Our colleges need us to do that, you know, our tech colleges, our universities. Like, so I think it's a great time to sell reinvestment. I think people are hungry to reinvest in these things. But I just want, you know, I think that there's merit in coming at the community with a vision of not just this time, but next time, and next time, and next time. And here's where we're aiming. This is the target, way off, you know, in the distance. So yeah, we're going to ask for these things this time. And yeah, we're not going to do everything. We're coming back, you know, two years from now, or a year from now, or whatever it might be. But that's where I feel respectful of your date situation.
Abby, could you just clarify? So, what the district's team did in getting to that reduced number by $30 million? This is not the whole idea, we're doing like half of a roof, right?
No.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, so, but that's, they're able to potentially... So I just want to make sure it wasn't like, well, we do half of the roof. Yeah, because like, that whole, that still, that concept's still a little bit really unfamiliar. I said, I need to try that the next time my roof is reduced. I can tailor how, I've done several roofs myself. Not DIY, absolutely not.
I can show you, though. You can hire them.
So, I guess for me, though, is, and then the other thing, I wanted to make sure, the compromise that happened in 2016, why South is... Was that the compromise in the, was the priority level set the same? And was a compromise being made in the medium? Because I guess for me, all the high has to be done. I'm going to be, all that has to be done. But where was the, where was this negotiation to move? Was South in the medium priority 10 years ago? And it was decided actually to be moved? Or was, like, South in low? Because I'm just kind of curious how that determination was to do, let's do the long. Were both of them in the middle, the medium priority? And you just went and said, let's do the long? Because I guess for me, I also, like, South has to be done. So, so, so that has to be, has to be done. So I was, those are why I asked those questions.
Sure. So we did not have a formal 10-year facility study done in 2016. The last one was done in 2010 in preparation for the 2011 referendum. So I think that really the discussion around South in 2016 was the age of the building. So DeLong kind of got a facelift and an upgrade when the building was approximately, I believe it was 40 years old. And so, South was built 10 years after DeLong. And so, really, it was being strategic and knowing that we had a debt drop in that '21, '22, I don't remember off the top of my head, but targeted at that point in time with the goal of maintaining that debt service levy and not having it go up and down. And we can look at that information. I know we've talked about how that debt drop impacts the tax levy. And so that was what a lot was talked about in 2016. We knew it needed to be done, but being strategic and kind of doing it at the same age of life as DeLong was. Now, in the current stuff that we're looking at, I think our community, and I know that my team, is like, South is a high priority. There's some other buildings in there that are high priority as well. The differences are that some of the two to five-year things are based solely on the age of equipment in buildings. So we have a couple of buildings that were, Lakeshore is one, that was built in 1994, I believe. And so they're hitting 30 years in 2024, so in the next five years. And so there's an automatic just calculation of, well, some of the equipment that's in there, the lifespan is 30 years. So my team said, okay, we're working on this equipment. We're looking at it. We have experts. And they're saying, no, it's probably more like 35. Or there's pieces, if something goes bad, that we can replace and extend that life for more than 10 years. So they were really looking at some of the mechanical pieces and some of those things because the architects and engineers want to identify everything that's end-of-life cycle. And then my team really went building by building and physically looked at, what do we know about it? We're in these buildings every day. And then they were looking at, here's the ones that we're really having a lot of problems with. So that's really where those changes are. Now, I want to comment about your half of the roof. Unfortunately, for many years, you know, what happens is they would do roofs based upon warranty. And so, because the cost of roofs are very expensive, and some of our buildings have a lot of roof space, it's really about trying to keep those roofs in warranty. So that way then, we don't all of a sudden get so out of warranty and we have a major problem, and now we have a really big expense. And so I think one of the, I don't want to say it's a great strategy, but that was one of the things that was used because we didn't pass a referendum, and we weren't able to do the whole thing at one time. So really looking at the sections of where are we experiencing the most problems? What's out of warranty? How do we get the biggest thing for our bulk? And so even in the 2016 referendum, we had certain spaces of certain roofs that we did because they were going to be out of warranty. So it's not a great solution, but it's a solution. Again, and that goal is try to keep our roofs in warranty. So that way then, if there is a problem, it doesn't cost us as much as it would if we had to, you know, foot the whole bill.
Josh, with four minutes left, and Laurie and Mark will fill our own budget open, so they're going to have more opportunity structured to ask these questions. Is there anything that I want to give you, the last question or the last word? Yeah, I'm sorry, I just cut you off the follow-up, but I just wanted to make sure.
Well, it gets drawn up to me all the time at my own home, so I'm not really sure.
No, if any other questions come up, I'll make sure to ask those of Abby, and hopefully in a manner that she can share the response to everyone.
Sure. Okay. Well, then, if you did want to follow up with something here and all that.
Good.
All right, well, then, I mean, three minutes under budget tonight, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Rock, shock, jayhawk.